I just have to call roll and I don't really need to talk in, hopefully.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education for December 9th, 2014. May I have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Roqua.
Present.
Student Board Member Singer.
Present.
Board Member Rosenbaum.
Here.
Board Member Low.
Here.
Board Member Black.
Here.
Vice President Maris.
Here.
President Knight.
Here. Let's see. Oops. Wrong page. For those who would like to participate will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There was no action taken in closed session this evening, and we now have to approve our agenda for tonight. Could I ask for a motion?
I have a comment on that. We have two staff reports, and they seem to be attached to two of the action items. So it seems sort of incongruous to have them separate. We have a staff report on the interim, and then we're going to staff report on English-language learners, and then we're going to approval of the interim. So just see, does that make sense to just put them all together?
Rather than have staff reports, just make them background for the action items?
Background for the, yeah. It just seems it might be more efficient.
Makes sense to me.
So you're talking about reordering them. How would you do it, then?
Put the staff report right in front of the item that it's related to as information.
Change it from a staff report to background information on an action item.
Excuse me. Was there a reason why you chose to put it separately? Was there maybe a rationale that we would need to hear?
That's a good question.
It can be, we can put on the review and action items and make it one item. I mean, we can back-to-back.
And the same thing with the Title III is related to the report on, make it easier for our folks who are reporting.
I think we can do that.
I mean, it's not a big deal, but.
Okay, well, do you want to make a motion?
I'll move the agenda with those two changes.
I'll second.
So let me just clarify the changes, then. You're talking about moving the first staff report on the interim budget directly in front of the action item to approve the interim budget.
Just go to review and action items because the staff report is related to the review and action.
And then after that vote, we would have as background for the English learner update that report.
With the final Title III program. Does that work for you?
We can do that.
I was scratching my head, and then I didn't say anything.
Just wanted to clarify the change. So then your motion is to approve the agenda with that change. Was there a second? Yes, Paul. All in favor of approving the agenda with that change, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we will do it in that order. Next up is a recognition of outgoing board members, and I'm going to hand this over to our superintendent.
Thank you so much, and I'm actually going to come off the dais and go over to the other Good evening, President Knight, Vice President Maris, trustees, student board members, staff, and all of our wonderful audience here, community members. This is an agenda item that I would say gives me mixed emotions. One, it's with great pride that we acknowledge with grateful thanks our outgoing president and our vice president of our Board of Trustees. The mixed emotions are that I've only had six months to work with you, and in that six months, it has been my absolute pleasure to have worked with you and to learn from you, and I'm wishing you all the best. I'll kind of start with that. What we would like to do is honor President Knight for his service as Board President as well as trustee, and Alan Maris being acknowledged for his service as Vice President and trustee. And we have a couple of presentations that we would like to make tonight, and the first is I would like to introduce Isabel Cortez. She is a staff member with Senator Lonny Hancock's office, and she would like to make a presentation to both President Knight and Vice President Maris.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Senator Hancock unfortunately could not make it. She's traveling in Washington, D.C. to address issues regarding public safety. As you all know, the whole country is going through an interesting time right now. I am here on her behalf to thank you and to acknowledge you, both President Knight and Vice President Maris, for your commitment to Albany, to the school district, and for your long time helping and assisting our students. I think it's no surprise that, as Senator Hancock always says, Albany Unified School District is definitely the model for District Nine. We have both Oakland Unified School District and Berkeley and half of San Leandro Unified School District, and Albany is definitely a stellar. So we definitely thank you, and I'm going to read briefly what she wrote in her Senate recognition. Presented in honor of your retirement as a member of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education, you're commended for your demonstrated leadership and commitment to educational excellence and your outstanding service to the Albany community. Thank you.
So I'm going to invite both Jonathan and Alan to please come down and to do a couple of photo ops, and I actually would like to invite the rest of the trustees and our student board members to please come down and take a photo with both Alan and Jonathan.
(inaudible). We're going to put you in the middle, we'll kind of hold rounds behind you. We're going to put you in the orange position. There we go. Do you get us on the beat to like do the turn halfway? You're good. Wait, one more, one more. Take your time, Mom. Usually what I do when I turn. Okay.
So I want to point out that one never gets too old to have your mom be proud of you, and very, very happy to have Jonathan's family here. And if, could you, his family, please stand so we can actually recognize you for being supportive of our Board President. And Alan, did you bring family members here tonight?
They all have things to do. I raised them well. My wife is doing some art projects, and both my kids are gainfully employed.
So I know you think this might be done, but it's not. So I want to tell you a little about Jonathan. Jonathan teaches biology and writing at San Francisco State University, and he's been a lecturer there since 2005. But before that, he was a science writer and a postdoctoral researcher. He has his PhD in molecular biology from UC Berkeley and a certificate in science communication from UC Santa Cruz. He has two elementary-age children in the district, and he's been a member of the Albany Board of Education since December of 2010, serving both as Vice President of the Board for one year and President of the Board for two years. And so if you will come back down, just one?
Vice President for two years.
Vice President for two, President for one. Okay. So we're going to ask you to come back down again, because we would like to, on behalf of the school district, present you with an honor. So when you are a trustee, but also when you're Board President, you get a special plaque, and this one, although you can't take it off.
We have, so this says awarded to Jonathan Knight, Board Education President. In honor of your time, effort, and dedication to the students and staff of Albany Unified School District, we extend to you our warmest regards and sincere appreciation, awarded on December 9th, 2014. Congratulations. Thank you. (applause) Come on, Mom. Come on, Mom. It's our Christmas tree. It's Christmas for nine, not me. That's always how you get that Christmas card around the same. Okay, everyone, cheese. I'll send it to you.
Congratulations. Alan Maris. Born and, I love when you stand up, that's great. Born and raised in Portland, Oregon. Alan graduated from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor and the University of California Berkeley with degrees in engineering. He has traveled and studied in Europe, Africa, Asia, North and South America. He has worked as an engineer for 30 years in the marine industry. He's been married to his wife for 42 years and has two children, daughter, son, and granddaughters, Molly and Emily. He has been an Albany resident for 41 years. He has been a substitute teacher, a volunteer tutor in math and science, yearbook advisor for the Albany Unified School District for 12 years. He is also a member of the Albany Little League Board and coach, member of the Albany Charter Review Committee, Parks and Rec Commission, Waterfront Committee, Berkeley Albany Mental Health Commission, Alameda County Housing Authority, Alameda County Traffic Commission, Albany Community Foundation, Albany City Council, and the Albany Board of Education since 2010, serving as both as Vice President and trustee. I don't know what you do in your spare time. I do know that you train for the Albany Triathlon every year.
Along with Melissa. And he was mayor at one point as well.
And Alan, truly, you are a community member who just gives and gives and gives to the city of Albany. And I want the audience to know, it takes a lot to be a trustee. We entrust our children to you as board members to ensure that we as staff educate all of the children of Albany to our best ability, and we also have something we'd like you to have, so if you can come up front, please.
So this is awarded to Alan Maris, Board of Education Vice President. In honor of your time, effort, and dedication to the students and staff of Albany Unified School District, we extend to you our warmest regards and sincere appreciation, awarded December 9th, 2014. Congratulations. (applause) Come down, take their picture. Alan, do not take your picture long. With your board members. (laughter) No, go ahead, get the first. Next, picture me. Stop. I do it like last time. Great. Excellent. Thank you. (applause)
And trustees, would you like to comment? Sorry, not taking your job, but I, would trustees like to make comments? I think we would. I'll go last because of the surprise. Okay, so you.
I can't even think of what to say more than Val did. You know, it's been a, this board, this particular board is, you know, I've been on the board now for seven and a half years, and this has been the best board to work with, I think, the leadership that both of you have shown. And Jonathan, I'm sorry that life is getting in the way of keeping you here, and Alan has been, you know, as long as I've been in Albany, which is 41 years. You know, I've always known who Alan Maris was, so it's just been a pleasure working with both of you.
Thanks, Ron. Yeah, when John and Alan came onto the board, it was a great thing. I think it's been a very highly functional board. I've always appreciated John right from the first day, always said something when he had something to say.
Yeah, that's right.
And it was always thoughtful, it was worth listening to, and I really appreciate that. He's been a great leader, both as Vice President, as President, and just as a trustee. He's always been highly reliable, great fellow board member. Alan, of course, nobody can fill Alan's shoes. He's probably the best-known public servant in Albany for good reason, and we've been honored to have him on the board. He's kept us honest. When I first came on the board, it was, you pretty much had to shout if you wanted to get heard, and, you know, jump up and push somebody out of the way, and Alan said, we're not going to have that anymore. People are going to take turns, everyone's going to be heard, and he made it stick, and I really appreciated that, and I hope we can carry on in that tradition after he's gone, but I know he'll be in the audience a lot of nights, and he'll probably give us a good whipping if we get out of line. So thanks to both of you for your service.
He'll yell over the fence at me.
So I'll finish with a little something I'd like to say to each of you, and then just a small token from the three of us, and I'll explain it. Alan, I want to thank you and recognize that not only have you been one of the longest-serving, but one of the hardest-working members I've ever seen. I mean, during the time that my son has been at the high school, it's been very logical for me to attend a lot of events. Every time I went to almost anything, I saw Alan there. Alan and I went to football games together, Alan and I went to PTA meetings together. Alan just worked really hard and was really present, and I really felt like that meant a lot to people, and it just seems like you're at a point in your life where you deserve to relax a little bit, but I really appreciated that, so thank you for that. And Jonathan, you're sort of on a different part of the section, but Jonathan I have a special place for in my heart, because Jonathan and I represent on the board something a little bit different. I think it's very important on the board to have diversity and something represented in the community, but Jonathan and I have been parents during the time that we're on the board, and I think that's really important. However, I realize that as a result of that, that Jonathan has had to work very, very hard. He, I, he doesn't say much about it, but I can observe and I can infer that he has been an incredible multitasker, that he has been a wonderful parent, that he has been a wonderful son, that he has been working, that he has a lot of things to do, and that he still manages to do all that. And when he was president, I totally relaxed, because I knew that he would do the work and he would respond and would write a very clear and articulate email, and I wouldn't have to worry about it. And I was thinking all the time, he has so much to do. So I just want to show my thanks and my respect for someone that works that hard with so many different things to balance. And now from the, from the three of us, just a little, just a little something, because we've worked together for so long and we like you. I was at the Albany Middle School Crafts Fair, and we, there is a, an Albany School Care member, Karen Butwittnick, yes, and she does some fabulous drawings and prints of Albany. This one caught my attention because the wild turkeys are in the corner. You know, when I was jogging on Thanksgiving, I had to take a big detour around the wild turkeys. But anyway, this is a small token from the remaining board members to the two of you, because it's in gratitude for your service to the community, and, oh, excuse me, and we want to make sure that you remember the community and how much we give you. So for John, with our gratitude for working with us, for putting up with us and serving the community, and to Alan, thank you for serving Albany in so many ways for so many years, from your fellow board members. (applause) Yeah, I thought that was cute.
Fantastic.
Did you hold her, is that for?
Oh, sure.
The boss says hold them.
You see the wild turkeys in the corner and the taco truck? And then each of the schools are, oh, by the way, the proceeds for these went to the, to school care. So it was very, it was really wonderful.
I'll let you close. So first of all, I need to confess something. I had a look at the first interim financial report and started to make comments tonight. It's hard to hold back, but it does look good. The comment I was going to make is nice to see that the structural deficit is more manageable. And thank you to the community who passed Measure LL and made that possible. It's a great community to be a board member in. So one thing I have to admit is that has, that this position can be stressful, and it'd also be very rewarding. So to the two new board members, to Ross and Charlie, you really have something to look forward, and I so much appreciate your willingness to step up and experience being a board member. It's been very rewarding, experience working with the board members, administrative staff, and especially with teachers and the public. We have some incredible teachers here, and it feels really good to try to serve their needs, because they do so much for us. Well, thank you to the teachers and to the public. I just mentioned passing Measure LL. This is just a fabulous community to serve. And I appreciate the way the board focuses primarily on the needs of students and families. And that can be a struggle, and we have limited assets to work with, so it's never, it's rarely perfect for everyone. The highlight of, the highlight of my experience on the board has been the student speeches at graduation at the high school. I want to give best wishes to the future board members, the district students, and especially to Albany families. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve. It's been a great experience.
I mean, this is, this is fantastic. Thank you so much. This is, it's been a great four years. What an experience working with these folks. I've learned a ton from them, and I really respect them and the way that they care for kids. It's just so clear that what is foremost in their minds up here when we're working. And I learned a few things about each of them. You know, Ron, I learned early on, with your, what, 40-plus years of experience in education, that you have developed an instinct, and that your instinct, your gut, isn't wrong most of the time. And I would let our new board members know that if you ever say, you know, my gut is telling me something, that they should listen and pay attention. Pat, I don't, you know, I think we talked early on, I sort of think of you as the board's intellectual, education intellectual. I don't know if that's accurate, but the way you know the research, the way you know the literature about education is really impressive, and that's always, I've always noticed that about you. And early on, we were talking about stress and how stress might be affecting students. It was one of the first things that we really talked about together, and I think that, and you've done so much about that in Albany. We've got initiatives, challenge success, and changes in start times at the high school, a lot of it sort of initiated by discussions about stress and students. And so I just really respect the way you know about teaching and learning and all of that. So it's been really good working with you. Paul, I know, every board needs someone like Paul who has unbelievable attention to detail, superhuman almost. And I know we joke up here about how if there's a grammatical error or a typo, he'll catch it, but I don't really mean that. I think much more important than that is Paul's ability to remember everything that we've done and remind us of it when we forget, which is not all that infrequent, or to catch glaring errors that the rest of us will miss in, say, a contract that doesn't have a nondiscrimination clause. He'll say, hey, wait a minute, this contract doesn't have a nondiscrimination clause. It's hard to catch errors that are, it's harder to catch omissions than it is things that are there and staring you in the face. So that's, that's something that I think is extremely valuable. And what more can I say about Alan that has already been said? I mean, public servant extraordinaire. It's been a real great honor and pleasure working alongside of you, and, you know, the one, the one thing that will resonate with me is how much you were the voice of the kids who are not the academically, you know, gifted or the college-bound, but every, reminding us that every kid matters and that we have to remember that as a board, and we all have to remember that as, as people working in this district, and I'm sure you'll be back to remind this board if it ever forgets that, so. And Val, I wish we had had more time to work together. It's only been six months, but boy, you've been such a breath of fresh air for this, for this district, and I really just respect your, your discipline and your, the wellness tips and all of that, but also just the way you listen. I just, I feel like it's what we really need here, and I think it's, it's going great. So I just wish we had more time together. I don't want to forget Jackie down, you know, Jackie Manibus, and we see her there. It's easy to forget that she keeps this, this thing together. She is the glue that makes these meetings run and that gets everything out on time and that gets the website in shape and a whole bunch of other stuff in addition, but I just thank you, Jackie, for being there the whole time. When I need a pen, she's always got a pen. I don't remember my pen all the time. And our student board members, I just want to say, the two of you, I'm really impressed. I think, you know, I've seen a number of student board members come through the board, and some are more or less engaged, but you guys are really taking it on, making, having thoughtful comments, and I really appreciate that, and I think leadership in the district must be doing a great job to, to have, to have you guys come forward, so thank you. And, gosh, I could thank everybody. Great staff, everybody's wonderful. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it, it's been a pleasure. (applause) And I'm sure you'll be back to remind this board if it ever forgets that. So. And Val, I wish we had had more time to work together. It's only been six months. But boy, you've been such a breath of fresh air for this district. And I really just respect your discipline and the wellness tips and all of that. But also just the way you listen. I feel like it's what we really need here and I think it's going great. So I just wish we had more time together. I don't want to forget Jackie down there. You know, Jackie Manabousin. We see her there. It's easy to forget that she keeps this thing together. She is the glue that makes these meetings run and that gets everything out on time and that gets the website in shape and a whole bunch of other stuff in addition. But I just thank you, Jackie, for being there the whole time. When I need a pen, she's always got a pen. I don't remember my pen all the time. And our student board members, I just want to say, the two of you, I'm really impressed. I think, you know, I've seen a number of student board members come through the board and some are more or less engaged. But you guys are really taking it on, having thoughtful comments. And I really appreciate that. And I think leadership in the district must be doing a great job to have you guys come forward. So thank you. And gosh, I could thank everybody. Great staff, everybody was wonderful. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure. So we have one more official action as a sitting board, which is to certify the November 4th, 2014 election results for our Board of Education candidates.
So the purpose of this item is for the board to certify the election results for the Albany Unified School District election held on November 4th, 2014 for Board of Education candidates. The Alameda County Registrar's Office has provided the certificate of election results and a copy of the official canvas statement of vote for the Albany Unified School District election held on November 4th, 2014 for Board of Election candidates. And on November 4th, the citizens of Albany voted. And I would like to make the recommendation that the Board of Trustees receive the certification of the November 4th, 2014 election results for the Board of Education candidates.
I will move that we accept the certification of November 4th, 2014 election results. Board of Education candidate.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the election results. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So unanimously certified the election results. It's now time for me to pass the gavel so that our superintendent can administer, oh, no, can run the oath of office administration.
Thank you. Can we please, one more time, I'm just going to ask where you all stand and thank both Jonathan and Alan for their years of service on our board. So we'll excuse both of you.
We are excused.
Don't go.
Oh, sure. Put it on my door.
Trustees, on November 4th, 2014, the citizens of Albany voted for candidates running for the Board of Education and reelected Paul Black and elected Charles Blanchard and elected Ross Stapleton-Gray to the Board of Education. Tonight, we have the Honorable Mayor Joanne Wile, Mayor of the City of Albany, and newly-elected Assemblyman Tony Thurman, who will administer the oath of office to our newly reelected and elected trustees. So I'm going to ask that Mayor Wile and Assemblyman Thurman, please come forward and conduct the oath of office.
Paul. I'll begin with Paul and then Assemblyman Thurman will do Charlie Blanchard.
I, Paul Black, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I will take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just like in school, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Assemblyperson Thurman.
Good evening. Yes. It's an honor to be here through the chair, trustees, student trustees, staff, and members of the Albany community. Before administering the oath, which is an honor, I do, if you would allow me, a point of personal privilege. Having served as a school board member in that little district right next door, West Contra Costa, I'm going to ask you that question that everyone asks me. Are you sure you want to do this? You know, people will tell you it's the hardest job that you'll ever do. And I agree. But it's no more important job and no better opportunity to serve, as you will have heard from those who've served and with whom you'd served. So it's an honor to be here tonight. And I thank you for allowing me to be a part of your swearing-in ceremony. Trustee-elect Blanchard, if you would please join us here. And if you would please raise your right hand. I, Charles Blanchard, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations, Trustee Charles Blanchard.
I, Ross Stapleton-Gray, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
So before Assemblyman Thurman and Mayor Wile leave, we would like to get all of the board members together to take a photo op. And I want to take this opportunity to welcome Assemblyman Thurman to Albany. And while I know you may be across the way. Trustees, would just give me a couple of seconds. I have to write down a number.
United and thank you for coming.
Trustees, our next item on the agenda is the annual Board of Education reorganization. The purpose of this item is that the November 25th, 2014 Board of Education meeting, the board discussed the annual Board of Education reorganization as called for in the Board of Education Governance Handbook. Members made known whether they would be willing to assume either the office of President or Vice President. The Board of Education Governance Handbook outlines the procedures for conducting the annual Board of Education reorganization. The updated process is listed below. And for the purpose of our audience, I ask that you please indulge me as I read all 13 of the procedural items. I will go fast. At the reorganization meeting, the superintendent will preside over the election of the president. The newly-elected president will preside over the election of the vice president. Any board member may nominate any other board member, including the current officers, for either office. There is no limit to the number of times a member may serve as an officer, nor is there any expectation that all members will serve as officers or automatically rotate into either position. The presiding officer shall ask each member whether he or she wishes to nominate someone for the position. The member may nominate him or herself or another member, or may decline to make a nomination. The nominated member will be asked to accept the nomination. If the member declines to accept the nomination, he or she will not be considered to have been nominated. No second is required for a nomination. After all nominations have been made, the board shall take a vote for each nominee. If nominated, a member may vote for him or herself. No member may abstain from voting. In the case of a tie, the presiding officer will hold a runoff vote. I'm going to start at the end. Trustee Rosenbaum, do you wish to make a nomination of yourself or another member?
I do not.
Sorry?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Pat Low, would you like to make a nomination?
Not at this time. I am going to allow that honor to go to another board member.
Trustee Black, would you like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Ron Rosenbaum for president.
Member Rosenbaum, do you wish to accept the nomination?
I will.
Thank you. Trustee Blanchard. I have to learn new names. Trustee Blanchard, would you like to make a nomination?
No, thank you.
And Trustee Stapleton-Gray, would you like to make a nomination?
No, thank you.
All nominations have been made and so now we need to call for a vote. We have one nomination, and that is for Ron Rosenbaum for president of the school board. And we need to poll for each, for the nomination. Please, Ms. Manabousin. Member Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Member Low?
Aye.
Member Black?
Aye.
Member Blanchard?
Aye.
Member Stapleton-Gray?
Aye.
Congratulations, President Rosenbaum. So I'm going to ask that President Rosenbaum, please, if we want to shift, or please come here. Mr. Stapleton-Gray, please take your candy with you. I'll miss you. I want you all to know that I have cherished holding the gavel for all of like five minutes. I turned the gavel over to you. Congratulations, sir. The president will now preside over the rest of the agenda for the board.
We will now take nominations for, let me see, get on the right place, for Vice President of the Board. And we'll start with Member Low.
I would like to nominate for Vice President, Board Member Black.
Mr. Blanchard?
Pass.
You need to ask whether I'll accept it or not.
Oh, well, you accepted. I'm sorry.
Yes.
You passed, Mr. Blanchard. Do you have another nomination?
No.
Mr. Stapleton-Gray?
No, thank you.
We have one nomination for Paul Black for Vice President. Can we poll the board, please?
Member Low?
Aye.
Member Blanchard?
Aye.
Member Black?
Aye.
Member Stapleton-Gray?
Aye.
President Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Congratulations. Shift. I'm out of practice. I'm sorry. It's been a while. We'll now move on to School Spotlight.
No, sir. If you'll indulge me, you have to appoint the superintendent to serve as the secretary of the board.
That's right. Thank you. We, hmm. Appoint the secretary, page 11, yes, page 11. Appoint the secretary of the School Board of Education. So can you let us know what that is about?
Thank you, President Rosenbaum. The purpose of this item is for the board to appoint the superintendent to serve as the secretary to the board for the 2015 calendar year. Board Policy 9100 calls for the appointment of a secretary to the Board of Trustees at the annual organization meeting. The superintendent serves as the secretary to the board as called for in Board Policy 9122, secretary. In order to comply with Board Policy, the board shall annually appoint the superintendent as a secretary. The recommendation is to appoint the secretary to the Board of Education.
So this is an action item, so that we have a motion.
I move that we appoint Superintendent Val Williams as the Secretary to the Board of Education.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we move on to School Spotlight. Oops. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
And today we'll be recognizing Marin Elementary.
You'll have your tag next week. A true CNI director, thank you. I am very, very proud to continue our new tradition of spotlighting our schools. It's very important for our community to know the outstanding work that is done by our staff as well as the learning that takes place in all of our schools. And tonight, I am proud to introduce our Marin Elementary Principal, Mrs. Alexia Ritchie, who is going to give to us tonight or present to us the Marin School Spotlight. Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you, Superintendent Williams. And congratulations again to the new board members. And thank you, Jonathan and Alan, for your service to Albany. I really do appreciate everything you've done for our students. When Superintendent Williams invited us to present, it didn't really take me long to come up with the theme, which was Team Marin. I'll explain my appearances today. The theme was Heroes and Sheros during our Respect My Spirit days. Yesterday, we had, what did we have yesterday? Animal Spirit Day, which was the brainchild of one of our fifth-grade students. And so talk about a capstone project. He's the one who created Cave, the theme that everybody wore for the past couple of days. And so that's just one of the spotlights. The other one is going to be presented by my tech wingman here, Stephen Nave, a second-grade teacher. He's created a video for us. And so we're going to be looking at that. But again, going back to Team Marin, you know, it's not just the people we're going to see in the film, but it's the team mentality that has the student goal in mind in every decision that we make. And so with that, I also want to acknowledge other team members here tonight. Kim Trutaine, our PTA president, and other parents and my staff. My staff, if you could be acknowledged today for your time and your effort and your extra overtime tonight. I appreciate that. Team Marin, if you could stand, please. And for the greater community as well. And Marin is a very special place to work, to serve. And Marin is a very special place to work, to serve, to be a student. And these student voices, the staff voices, the parent perspectives are clearly shown. And again, the producer and director of tonight's video, Stephen Nave, he'll start that for us.
Are we ready?
In 1972, a 56-year-old school named Marin was demolished.
What's it say?
It says, "I love it when a plan comes together."
Again, that was Mr. Stephen Nave, second grade at Marin, producer and director of Team Marin. And I've had the privilege and certainly the honor of working at every single school in this district, with the exception of Albany Children's Center for some reason. And I can honestly say that, you know, I haven't saved the best for last because really what we are is we are one piece of that puzzle that puts Albany all together. And you're only as strong as the sum of your parts. And so, we honorably submit Marin School tonight. Thank you.
Well, as the kid said, it's awesome. So, do we have any board comments?
That was fabulous. It's so much more fun than reading a report, too.
Yeah, thanks. That was great. That was wonderful. My son graduated from Albany High School over six years ago, but he went to Marin School and still remembers it fondly. And some of his teachers are still there, including Stephen Nave. And we were thrilled with Marin, and I'm still thrilled with Marin. Thanks for everything.
My introduction to AUSD and our kids' introduction was in Maggie Shepherd's class, both of them, at Marin. And I could see things on that video that I helped build, so I'm loving it.
Maggie, you had my kids, too. We were all a little different then. Thank you so much. Alexia, you're doing just an incredible job. And Marin was incredible when my kids went there, and it's more incredible now. And Stephen, thank you so much for that amazing production. So, if we don't have any more comments from the public, we'll move on to approval of the consent calendar. And we only have one item. Which is...
Personnel assignment.
Yeah, it's... Do we have motion?
I'll move if we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moves us to the student board member report. And we're right on time.
So, December was a very packed month and has been so far and will be very soon. It's a great month for the arts department, the magical delights, whereas this Friday and Saturday and the AMS Art Festival was on this Sunday. And coming up, the Winter Musical will begin production on this Thursday. And the vocal and instrumental music departments at the high school and middle school will be having concerts in the next few weeks. So, good times.
And the men's and women's basketball seasons have started officially. And the men's team had a game today at home at 7:00. And also, the soccer seasons for both men's and women's soccer have started. So, moving out of fall sports and into our exciting winter sports right now. And next Wednesday, on the 17th, we'll be having our American Red Cross Blood Drive at the high school. And we've started recruiting students to give blood, and the recruitment process is ongoing. We're trying to get as many students as possible who are eligible to donate blood. And they meet the age requirements and the height and weight requirements as well. We're having a little bit of difficulty with that, but we have a great group of students who are going to be donating on Wednesday.
The high school leadership has been planning a spirit and lunchtime activity for next week on the 17th. That's Wednesday. For right before students leave for winter break, hoping to tie in some of the spirit of the holidays and just the spirit of the school. And there's hopes to extend this into the future with periodic ones, maybe one every two, one or two months for the entire school to enjoy.
And we've mentioned it before, but the planning for winter ball is in full swing. We're discussing many different aspects of it, and it's an exciting process. We seem to have a lot of interest in the event this year, which is a nice change from last year. And it's good to bring the school together.
And the teacher talent show, which was planned by the leadership, has been postponed. The plan is to expand it a lot more and incorporate teachers from different parts of the district, not just the high school. But in order to make that happen, we've noticed that we have to have a little more time for planning. So, it's for an undetermined date at the moment.
Any board comments?
I like that idea of including teachers from all over the district. I'm sure there's a lot of talent out there.
I just want to watch what superintendent's gonna do.
I have no talent.
You could lead a yoga workshop.
There you go.
Anyone else? I've been watching the bullet in, and I see the move for the blood drive. And it's very clever. Have lots of blood? And, you know, sure you do. Come on down and sign up. So, for folks who are interested in that, that's Wednesday, the 17th. Okay. Thank you. We now will move on to review and action items and the staff reports combined. So, we'll move to the first interim report and the report on that.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum. I want to make a point of clarification, just so trustees are aware, in the interest of time, we will definitely do the full first interim report by Alan Gard. If for some reason there is not enough time to completely do the English learner update, I'm going to ask the board possibly if we need to split it into a part one and part two. Marsha Brown is prepared to do part two at the next board meeting. I really want to be mindful of the board's time and the public's time.
Before we move on, just one thing I meant to comment before. The video that we just saw, can we make sure that we get it onto the website?
All of the videos for the school spotlights are put onto our website on the video section. Yes, we can do that. So, Alan, first interim report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Superintendent, President Rosenbaum, Vice President Black, trustees. My name is Alan Gard, the Chief Business Official for Albany Unified School District. And I'll be presenting the first interim report. So, we're gonna go over the purpose of the first interim, go over some budget basics, talk about some mixed messages that may be floating around in the media. Also, talk about how Albany Unified School District is affected by the local control funding formula. Talk about what's changed since we adopted the budget in June. Look at long-term financials and go over summary and next steps. So, tonight's presentation is to review and approve the first interim part. It's a statutory deadline to have it approved by December 15th. So, what is a budget? A budget is basically a financial present, a financial projection of income and expenditures based on assumptions. So, as assumptions change, the budget changes. We therefore bring a budget, an updated budget to the board four times a year. This is the first interim report. And what it's doing is providing an update based on actual enrollment that we have, staffing that's kind of settled down, updates in health and welfare premiums that have been received. Looking at... Because the school district budget is adopted usually prior to the state adoption budget, first interim also includes any changes that may have occurred because of the state adoption. So, just looking at the structure of the state budget. Three-quarters of our budget is funding that's received by the state or is... Yeah, from the state. And so, changes with the state's budget greatly affect Albany's budget. As you can see on the picture on the left, you can see that 42% of the state budget is going towards K-12 education. And that's a good and bad thing. It's good when times are good as far as state funding, but then it's bad when the state doesn't have a lot of money. You can also see on the chart on the right that two-thirds of the state revenues come from personal income tax. And of that two-thirds amount, the top 1% have paid half of the personal income tax revenues. So, what that means is usually the top 1% receive a lot of money from capital gains taxes and the stock market. So, really, if the stock market is doing well and the state budget is doing well, then school districts generally do well. So, what are some mixed messages that could be floating around there? Well, the LA Times posted a news article that said California schools and community colleges could get another $2 billion this year. And that's excellent news. What that means... Well, the mixed message is that the state has already assumed that they would be receiving the $2 billion. And so, they included in their budget that the first 1 million or the first 1 billion would pay off what are called cash deferrals. And what that means is that during the Great Recession, the state didn't have a lot of cash. And so, they issued these cash deferrals, which are basically, they are putting off payments to school districts. So, all that means is that we're just getting the payments on time. So, it's not actual additional money that we could receive or that we can... Additional spending authority that we have. You can see on the right that the Legislative Analyst Office also posted something that said next year there could be an additional $6.4 billion to education. And as you'll see in the next slide, that the state has already included that into their budget as well. So, in the short term, there doesn't look to be a lot of change in our multi-year projections. But we'll know more in January when the governor publishes the governor's budget proposal. So, this was a slide from May 2014 showing that the state had already assumed that they would be receiving, that there would be a lot of... There would be over $6 billion in funding growth over next, over from this year to next year. So, because they've already included it into their assumptions, they've filtered that down to our multi-year projections. Now, our multi-year projections could possibly change depending on the state moving buckets around and how they plan to utilize the additional money. But because they've already projected it, it's not likely that it would change. So, some other mixed messages. The Legislative Analyst Office is a nonpartisan fiscal advisor to the state. And you could see on this chart, the green line is projections from the state, which are the governor and the Department of Finance. So, the governor has an incentive to paint a rosy picture because, as you recall, two years ago, the governor was able to change the funding model for school districts. And it was a huge change that hasn't occurred in the past 40 years. And so, in order to calm nerves and let all the school districts know that, you know, everything's gonna be okay, they needed to paint a rosy picture, say that, you know, funding is gonna come, funding's gonna be there, and everything will be fine. The Legislative Analyst Office doesn't have that incentive. They just are able to present facts and reasonable assumptions. So, they published a fiscal outlook in November. And that fiscal outlook noted the dark red line, which is in the middle. And they said that even under the best assumptions, there doesn't seem to be a way that they could, that the state can meet the projections long-term. But what they also cautioned was that the Great Recession ended in 2009. And based on historical trends, it's actually likely that there would be a significant slowdown or stock market correction in the next five to six years. So, they've also showed a projection, which is this red line on what could happen to funding. So, yes, there's good news because this year and next year, there is... The economy's looking good. But long-term, we just have to be aware of that possibility. So, how does Albany Unified School District fare under the local control funding formula? Well, prior to the implementation of LCFF, was the Great Recession. And you can see from this chart that all school districts around the state have really start, have really been underwater. We were promised... We were promised money from just the statutory requirements of the old funding formula. But because of the Great Recession, they've made dramatic cuts. And so, we're only at the beginning stages of climbing out of that hole. But we were only able to survive because of prudent fiscal management and a strong community support. And so, we just need to be mindful of that in case of the next recession that could occur. So, what is the local control funding formula? It's really a change in funding because in the past 40 years, the state really tried to provide equal funding to school districts, where now what they're doing is trying to find equal funding for students. And so, they're providing a base grant based on specific categories and grade spans. And then, they're also providing additional funding for what they're called eligible students. And eligible students for the additional funds are low socioeconomic, English learners, and foster youth students. Because Albany Unified School District... Well, the states, the statewide average for the eligible students is 63%. And you can see from the chart that we have 34%. So, we're far below the statewide average, which is a good thing. But as far as funding under this model, it's not. You could also see under the local control funding formula, between 2013, '14 and 2020, '21, we're really only expected to get an additional $11.4 million. And of that $11.4 million, 70% of it is already committed to state requirements. So, some of those state requirements are the increase in STIRS and PERS contributions, the supplemental funds for the eligible students that we do have, commitments to 9-12 career technical education, and 3% required routine maintenance allocation. And so, really, what the state is saying is that the remaining 30% for Albany Unified would need to then cover all other costs. Those all other costs are not sufficient to be paid for under that 30%. And so, the purchasing power of Albany Unified would actually be reduced every year because the costs would escalate more than the increase in funding that we would receive. So, what changed since June when we adopted? We received a slight increase in revenues. Some of that was due to an ADA increase. Another part of it, a majority of it, was due to the state's actual implementation of LCFF is slightly higher than what they initially projected. They also provided funding called a one-time mandated cost reimbursement. The governor has a, what's called a wall of debt. And within that wall of debt, there's $7 billion to pay for, or the $7 billion owed to school districts for mandated costs that the state requires school districts to provide. And so, the state has a plan to pay off that $7 billion. And this one-time payment is a portion of that. So, as the economy does get better this year and next year, this could be additional money that we could receive. However, it's not planned in the current projections. There's also updated revenues for donations that we received. Updated expenditures. So, we updated staffing. You know, I'll be first, I'll be first to tell the board if there is a change in assumption that was my fault. And so, this first line was a correction that I needed to make as far as existing positions that weren't included in the budget. There's also STIRS employer contribution rate that needed to be updated. They initially assumed it would be 9.5%. And this year, when the state actually adopted their budget, it was 8.88%.
I just interrupted for a second. Recall, we have a no acronym rule.
Oh, sorry.
If you could just spell out STIRS and PERS once for the...
Yes. So, STIRS stands for the State Teachers Retirement System. And PERS stands for Public Employee Retirement System. Thank you. So, what is included in the budget? You know, I just, again, want to thank the community for their passage of Measure LL. That really helped reduce the structural deficit that we're facing. We also have supplemental funds that we're receiving within LCFF, which are targeted funds for targeted underserved students. There's two asterisks, which are noted for the 9-12 CTE funds and the 3% restricted maintenance. So, I'll talk about those more in detail at the next board meeting. But for the first interim, I just want to note that the 9-12 CTE funds, it's, a portion of it is backfilling the phase out of the Contra Costa County Office of Education because before LCFF, they would receive funding from the state to provide regional occupational programs. And so, they were actually fully paying for the programs held on our school sites. With LCFF, they're not receiving that funding anymore. And so, they've worked with school districts to phase out the contribution from the Contra Costa County Office of Education. So, this would need to be something that we would look at in detail as far as how to backfill.
And CTE is career technical.
Yes. So, what is not included in the budget? So, beginning next year, the Common Core implementation. We currently have about five FTE, which are full-time equivalent teachers on special assignment, which are helping with the implementation of Common Core. Those employees are being paid for from a one-time grant that we received from the state. And so, because that one-time grant is now gone, that's not included in the multi-year projection for next year. And as I mentioned at the previous slide, you know, finding a sustainable funding source for regional occupational programs. And also, a equipment refresh cycle. So, we've purchased, you know, Chromebooks for many of our students to utilize because of Common Core and S-Back testing, which is... Smart, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. Thank you. However, those have, the Chromebooks have a three-to-five-year shelf life. And so, we would need to provide sustainable funding in order to refresh that if that is something that the board would want to do.
Alan, if I might add before you go to the next slide, another piece that's not in the budget that's listed right now is what is called the BITSA program, the Beginning Teacher Support Program. It's our teacher induction program that this year is funded next, actually, it's funded less this year.
Yes.
Next year, it will be, I'll say, not funded, where it's, we won't have to, we won't receive money from the consortium, but we don't pay into it. The year after, we will be paying for our teacher induction program. And currently, our teacher induction program is with the Contra Costa, West Contra Costa County Office of Education. So, that's gonna be a cost that's incurred two years down the road.
And what does that cost?
It's about $30,000 that we receive for the beginning, for the BITSA program. And the second year, it would be basically an additional $30,000. So, next year, we're taking a $30,000 hit. The year after would be a $60,000.
So, will we in the near future be talking about how to maintain some of these things? Or...
At the next board meeting.
Do we have to give them up next meeting?
We're also looking at potentially some creative ideas of looking. And I've asked Cynthia to kind of take on a project to work with our neighboring districts for some alternatives to maybe creating our own consortium for our support providers. Something to take a look at.
Looking at different sources of funding.
Yes.
And I should clarify that the next board meeting, we won't have to make decisions on a lot of these items, but really just providing more information and more discussion on those items.
Thank you.
So, this is a multi-year projection for our first interim. This is the Combined General Fund, which is including things like the LCFF, the parcel tax that we receive, the federal and state fundings that we have. And so, this is our entire general fund, which is basically the operating budget of the school district. So, as you can see, we're still in a structural deficit. And so, that's something that we would need to look at going forward. However, we do have some healthy reserves that can help cover the structural deficit. But it's just something to be aware of. So, changing budget structures. So... So it, I think it would be a good information for the board. So before LCFF, there was, things were different. So the regional occupational program was fully paid for from outside sources. There is a, actually a cap on the state teachers retirement system contribution and the public employee retirement system. And so those were easily defined and normalized. And there was also a dedicated funding source for textbook adoptions. With LCFF, there's reduced funding because we're, we don't have the statewide average of eligible students. STIRS and PERS increases are going up dramatically. They're almost double, well, double for STIRS and then almost double for PERS. We're mandated to implement Common Core without a dedicated funding source. There's also the next generation science standards, and also a requirement to increase funding, increase services for our underserved students. And so with these constraints, our current budget structure breaks. And so one of the things that I think we should take a look at going forward is really just continuing the budget discussion to build a more sustainable structure with these constraints in place. So to summarize, the passage of Measure LL has greatly reduced the structural budget deficit by 1.3 million dollars. We're able to subsidize the deficit with our current reserves. However, doing so would not effectively make progress towards our strategic plan of assessing and increasing student achievement and supporting the whole child. And so the best time to make a change in our budget structure is when we still have resources available. So having these ongoing budget disruptions for long-term priorities is essential. So next steps is to approve the first interim budget. We'll talk about the, some of the topics that was discussed here at their next board meeting, more in detail on, you know, Common Core, on regional occupational programs, and finding more sustainable funding sources. The middle of January would be the release of the governor's budget proposal. And so staff would go to a presentation from school services, and we'll provide that update at the January 27th board meeting. And then we will incorporate that proposal, that governor's proposal with our second interim report in March. And with that, I take any questions?
Questions from the board. Paul?
This isn't really a question so much as a comment. First, thank you very much for that presentation. It was very clear and informative. This has been said before, but I, I just want to emphasize it for, for the public. First of all, they call it the local control funding formula, and it was sold on the basis that districts should have greater control over their own spending. And now we find that 70% of the spending is out of our control. Leaves us 30% that we can actually exert some local control over. And then funding formula means they've changed the way they're funding districts. And under this funding formula, we're getting less than we would have under the old funding formula. And at the same time, we're being required to contribute more to the retirement funds. So as a result, we actually end up behind, less money than we had before. We have a structural deficit of about a million dollars a year. And, you know, we're very thankful for Measure LL having passed, but that limited the damage. It didn't eliminate the structural deficit. So we do have our work cut out for us.
Other questions or comments? Charlie?
Thank you. Great report. I don't have questions on Alan's report, but on the interim budget itself. Do you want to hold that until we go through and, and come back? I'll just mention that I sent questions to Alan, which he did a fabulous job answering my detailed, picky questions. For the public record, I think it's important that I state some of the questions and Alan's answers, at least give brief summaries.
So why don't we move on to that unless we have some questions or comments from the public? Angela?
Hi, I'm Angela Thomas to the new board members. This will be real quick. At the last board meeting at Akalinas, I bragged on you guys just right on all their hard work with meeting with the legislators. So the board directed Nickerson to meet with the legislators over there. So you have some company. So I wanted to tell you that because I know how you guys, the superintendents, get together. So he was directed by the board to reach out to Torleksen and all of those on those, that side of the tunnel. And I am expecting a coalition between the two of you and whoever else I can rally.
Angela, can you do me a favor for the sake of our new board members? Can you tell who you represent, please?
I am the SEIU representative, so we represent the classified workers here, the janitors, the kitchen people.
Custodians.
Maintenance. Yes, they're going to kill me that I have brain freeze. But yeah, so the other classified people in the classroom, that's CSEA. But that's the little crew that I have. And it's a little crew, but they're a faithful crew, and I kind of like them.
So do we.
Very much so.
And we appreciate our partnership with, with Angela, SEIU. It's, we're very honored to have her representing our employees.
And keep reminding us, Angela, okay?
Thank you.
She will. So that moves to...
So we are recommending, staff is recommending that the board approve the 2014, 15 first interim report with a positive certification.
So we have questions on the interim report.
Charlie? If, if I'm up, I'm sure other people have questions too. But briefly, I asked what would be the impact of the recently approved state proposition two with respect to what reserves we might hold? And Alan gave us a great answer. In summary, he said it's unlikely that we would be put under the cap envisioned there for at least eight years. So we're kind of clear of that for the time being. A second question I asked, in going over the monthly expenditures and revenues, I asked Alan, what level of reserves do we actually need to maintain in order to meet our obligations each month without having to borrow money? And Alan's answer to that was a prudent amount could be the typical monthly payroll, which would be 3.2 million. So 3.2 million for us represents, if my calculation is right, about a 9% reserve. So thank you, that was a useful number to have in mind. Then I got to some more detailed questions. These have to do with Fund 35. Now, this, this takes us to page 118 of the board packet. And Fund 35, I forget the name of that. What is it, the county?
Correct, the school account, the county school facilities.
Thank you. As I understand it, that's basically where money we, we might receive from the state for modernization purposes would be placed. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's funding from the state for modernization. So it's money that we have in place now.
Right. Now, the question actually, I'm not sure that I saw an answer to, was given that we had 3.5 million in that fund, am I correct in interpreting that, the source of that revenue as being state modernization monies for a building which no longer exists, namely the old Albany pool? Or is that, are there other sources for that?
The, the $3 million was related to the Albany Aquatic Center project.
Okay. And so the other parts of my question there had to do with, there were two major expenditures from that fund. One was approximately 1.55 million. I'm sorry, I think I gave you the wrong page number when I gave...
You did.
It was page 166. There are a lot of pages here.
I've been crazy looking for it.
Page 166. So the 1.57 million for professional consulting services, and 1.5 million for capital costs. And Alan's answer there was the fund is set to pay most of the cost of the following projects, Ocean View Design, San Gabriel Design, Children's Center Heating, Middle School Heating Ventilation, High School Heating Ventilation, High School Security, repairs to a Cornell restroom. So most, most of these, as I understand it then, would be typical of modernization projects, and you're using these funds for that purpose. My, my follow-up question here was that when I was here to last board meeting, I thought that the board approved a proposal to, to pay for some of these expenses using the 1.2 million that had been in what we called Fund 20.
That's correct.
And I wasn't aware, but maybe the board could answer this for me, or Alan could answer it for me, whether the board had previously approved use of Fund 35 for these particular expenditures.
Yes, so we approved Fund 35 as well as the transfer of the other post-employment funds from Fund 20 to Fund 14. So that transfer will take place for a second interim. And both those funding sources combined will pay for these projects.
Yeah, we approved the specific list of projects and the use of that fund.
So, so that must have happened before last meeting? Is that right? Yeah, okay.
So to clarify your question, you're asking if, if that 1.2 million was to supplement the Fund 35?
In essence, in essence, yes.
Thank you. And that's correct?
Yes. Okay. So this list of projects, the costs of these projects actually exceeds what's, what's been taken from Fund 35. Fund 35 provides the first 3 million...
Correct.
Toward the cost of those projects.
That is correct.
Thank you. So...
It's good to have you back, Charlie.
And my, my very last question was, in, in looking at the summaries, we have a total of 10.5 full-time equivalent teaching positions, more this year than we did last year. And I asked Alan for a breakdown, and what you told me was we had .2 for mental health, .2 for intervention counselor, .4 for district nurse, and 9.7 teachers. So that left me with a follow-up question. Does that 9.7 include the five F, five full-time equivalent teachers on special assignment?
No, because the Common Core teachers that we have in place this current year were also in place last year. So that five Common Core teachers on special assignment were already included in the original count.
That was also one-time money, if I'm...
Correct.
Okay, so...
So it was a separate funding.
So I guess that still leaves me with the question about, we've added 9.7 teaching positions. Is this mostly supporting K3 class size reduction, or is it something else?
Most of it's spread out between K3 class size, as well as just growth that we're facing.
Okay. So thank you so much for your thorough response to these questions.
Pat?
So, thank you, Charlie. That was really interesting. So I, I also tend to do the same thing. I ask questions, but I'm only going to ask in public ones that I think would be useful for the other board members and for the public. So I asked about what are considered to be our three enterprise programs, and, and how they're doing with regard to being able to, to support themselves, which an enterprise program should, or whether they're deficit spending. I would like to, and I think Alan can summarize very well, because she did that for me, how they're doing. I would like to emphasize, however, that one of the enterprise programs, the Child Development Program, has always been, even in the toughest times, a, a, a fund and a program and services that the board was willing to supplement from the general fund because there were very, very important services, such as childcare for low-income families and so forth, which were incorporated in that. And there was a point during the state budget cutbacks where they had reduced things so much that it was becoming very difficult for the program to be able to be self-supporting. So if you would, wouldn't mind, you summarized so well for me, how the programs are doing?
Sure. So for the Albany Children's Center, which runs the Child Development Fund, they're doing well. We actually just received an increase in the grant this past month, and so that will be included in the second interim report. For the cafeteria fund, that's doing okay. Last year, it hit a slight deficit, but that was really just the cause of some one-time equipment costs. So in the first interim report, it's projecting a deficit. However, it's based on some conservative revenues, and so as we move forward, we'll update that. And me and the executive chef are working closely on, on monitoring that. The other enterprise program, which is the Albany Aquatic Center, that is, that program is actually embedded in the general fund, and they're doing well as well.
Paul?
Yeah, I didn't know if you were planning to go through the rest of your excellent discussion here. But were you planning to go through those slides and things, or, or not?
The...
I don't want to steal your thunder if you're about to do it.
The, the questions, or...
No, you're, before the actual budget, you have a kind of a, some, some diagrams and, and discussion about the budget. So...
Oh.
Were you going to present it, or?
Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. Then, then I'll just make a couple of, I'll make a couple of comments on it.
Yes.
First, and, and this is, this is very minor, you just included some background information, including the list of board goals. And I just wanted to comment that these board goals are very out of date. We're also months overdue on our board self-evaluation. So I'm going to propose, now that I'm on the agenda committee, you know, Ron and I can see that this happens, that we schedule a self-evaluation and consider whether we want to update the goals or just eliminate them. Then I wanted, you know, for the benefit of the public, there's a pie chart on page 82, which has a negative number in it, and you can't really draw a pie chart with a negative number. So it's kind of confusing. So I wonder if you would just talk us through it?
Sure.
So we understand, because this is a very important summary here, but it's a little hard to get from that graphic.
Yeah, that's, that's very good.
So the chart, the pie chart shows the combined...
Jackie, is it possible to bring up this page, page 82? Thanks.
Well, while she's doing that, I would like to...
Let me, I think I...
While she's doing that, I just want to make a little comment on, on something previous that Board Member Black said about, about the board, the board goals. If you remember, we had a fairly long discussion about how the board goals and the superintendent goals as related to the strategic plan, whether they, it was redundant actually to have separate, to have separate goals. And that, and there was an example of, of maybe one separate board goal where we were trying to improve communication, and our goal was crafted more about what we would do, you know, what our responsibility would be. So that's one thing that we might want to consider, as to whether that's appropriate or not at this point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So you suggested maybe we have that kind of a discussion in public?
At least we need a clarification.
Because Paul's point is correct. I mean, we just haven't talked about how these things mesh.
Why don't you talk it over in the agenda committee?
We will. Thanks. Thanks, sorry, Alan. That's okay. So this is the unrestricted general fund pie chart. And so the confusing thing is... is, we are receiving, um, let's see. Uh, we are receiving, uh, about, about 29 million in unrestricted general fund revenues. However, 4.5 million has to be moved out of the unrestricted general fund and into the restricted general fund to backfill programs such as, um, special education, uh, restricted routine maintenance, which doesn't have a funding source, but a requirement that we spend a, a specific percentage, uh, for, for maintenance, as well as, um, other smaller items such as, um, transportation. And so, uh, this pie chart's confusing because it's, it's saying that negative 15% of the funds go to restricted, which sounds, which doesn't sound right, so. Um, I'll find a different way.
That's really an out, an outgo, as far as the general fund is concerned.
Right, correct.
So basically, there's a piece of pie missing.
Correct.
Right.
That is correct.
Somebody's eating it already.
Somebody's eating that.
Right, so, so if you read.
I like that.
Right, if, if you read this, uh.
I like that.
If you read the, the budget, there, there's a lot of reference to contributions, and the unrestricted general fund contributions are listed on page 81 in a good chart there, so you can see where that money is going. It's all very important expenditures, but it's, it's coming out of the general fund. And one more thing that's making it hard to balance our budget.
And the list includes special education, transportation, special ed contribution, restricted routine maintenance of 3% mandated, and, uh, Common Core contribution. Do we have any, um, comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll move that we accept, um, the interim report.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Alan. Just as a, a point of, of order, I guess, um, being a little out of order, I did, I skipped over persons to address the boards, a matter on the, uh, not on the agenda, so if there is anyone, uh, could we do that now? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on sunshine negotiations proposal from Albany Teachers Association.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum. I am actually going to, um, turn this over to Cynthia Teo, who is our Director of Human Resources, and the purpose of this item is to conduct the public hearing for the public and the board to receive information on the Albany Teachers Association Sunshine Proposal reopeners for the 2014-15 school year. And we also have, um, in the audience, our co-president of the Albany Teachers Association, Kim Gray. Um, it is a very short sunshine, so I'll turn it over to.
Our first round has to open the public.
I'm sorry we had to open the.
I have a gavel.
Thank you, you're right.
Be careful. I'll open the public hearing.
And then, for the, for the purposes of the public, maybe just define what sunshining means?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, Cindy, do you want to go ahead and do that? Thank you.
So the first part of negotiations is, uh, the, well, one of the first things in negotiations is the sunshine process, which, um, allows each, uh, each team to let the other team know what it is they want to talk about during negotiations.
In a public manner.
In a public manner, yes.
Yes, that's why it's called sunshining, because you have to bring to light the topics of negotiation to the public.
Uh, and so we've gotten the sunshine from the Albany Teachers Association, and, uh, they would like to, uh, let us know that they want to talk about wages.
So the one item of sunshine is the article that they wish to open in the reopeners is salary. So just for the, for the, uh, public who may be watching this, usually what happens in negotiations, if there is, if the, um, contract for the employee association has sunset, then they do what is called a successor agreement, and that is something that has been, uh, was done at the end of last year. And then, that's usually for a three-year term. In the interim years, um, they conduct what are called reopeners, where the association and the district, um, have the availability to reopen certain articles. And so for this sunshine, the Albany Teachers Association has sunshined salary for their article. And at the January 13th board meeting, the district will then sunshine its articles or article.
So for clarification, we're sunshining articles for this current school year?
It is for the 14-15 school year, yes, thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? And we will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Um, do we need to, uh?
We do not need to take action, I don't believe.
No, the board, um, actually receives the sunshine from the Teachers Association, and then when we, um, when the district sunshines, it is the board who will approve the sunshine for the district.
Right, okay.
So we don't need to take action on this?
No, but if you would like to, just formally for the public record, you, uh, the board can make a motion to receive the sunshine proposal from the Albany Teachers Association.
So I'll accept the motion?
I'll move to, um, accept the sunshine proposal from the Albany Teachers Association.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to the, uh, Title III Program Improvement Plan and the staff report on English lang, language learner update.
So in the interest of time, I just wanted to do a time check with, uh, trustees. It is five minutes till nine, and I believe, um, Dr. Brown's presentation will probably be in excess of 30 minutes, Dr. Brown?
It's possible.
And to get through the other, um, agenda items, although they, be it, they're probably short ones, I'm going to recommend to trustees that, uh, Dr. Brown present the first half of the EL, um, report, and then we will, um, have her do, uh, part two, uh, the rest of it at the January 13th meeting, and then we can actually have this as an action item for the board to receive, if that is okay with trustees.
Any objections?
None.
It's, it's okay.
Okay, well, that'll turn over to Dr. Brown for the first half of our EL report.
So I'm continuing with my technical challenges that I've been having all day, Jackie, because there's some reason it's not coming up.
My understanding is there's been some technological.
I've not been able to print, I've not been able to be on email, I have not been able to send anything, I've been a little.
Like a little technic, technology cloud following.
If it has to do with technology, it's not working for me tonight.
And the storm's not even here yet.
Uh, yeah, and so I, I had this up earlier today, so, um, sorry, oh, I, but I will start. Um, Alan is kind enough, I was able to email from here today, so this evening, so I have my script here.
Is it in the agenda, because we?
It is in the agenda.
It's in the agenda, too.
Just scroll through the agenda.
Just roll down to, um.
Well, I, yeah, I did correct one of the slides that several board members noted that I had mistitled some things, but, um.
That might be in part two.
Or, or if it isn't, you can just, you can just explain. That's perfectly acceptable.
But we could just go to page 36 of this agenda.
Yeah, exactly.
It's called Murphy's Law. So, we're just going to roll with the punches here. Yes.
While we're waiting, we have a resolution, um, item D, which I would say that we could move on, um, to approve a resolution for signature.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
He's got it.
Do we actually need to pass that around and sign it?
Yes, that one.
Wherever it is.
There we are.
Okay.
It's magic. All right. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Williams, and members of the public and audience. It's, I'm Marsha Brown, the Director of Student Services. It's my pleasure to bring you an update on our English learners, um, this evening. So I will be providing you information, um, regarding the enrollment of English learners in our schools and district, uh, data regarding the California English Language Development Test, also known as the CELT, um, anticipated changes to the state English proficiency test, the federal program that supports English learners, and the accountability measures that accompany those funds. Please keep in mind that the information presented tonight is a snapshot, and the enrollment data is whether, as well as some of the other data, um, changes on a regular basis depending on student movement, as well as other factors. So this slide shows our current enrollment, well, it's actually from a couple of weeks ago, but, um, uh, by school. Um, as you can see, of our regular schools, Ocean View has the most English learners, and that's typical in, in our district. Um, they have currently had 265, and that Marin with 87 has the smallest number of the regular schools. Um, McGregor has three, and the Transitional Kindergarten at ACC had six, although I think that number's questionable, but that's what our data says, so we're scrubbing that data.
Sorry, that's three out of how many at MAC, um, because?
There are about 30 students enrolled at MAC.
Okay, so 10%.
Give or take, about 10%.
So.
This is the corrected slide, which, um, shows the enrollment as a, the, the kind of peach color is the English learners and the purple is the non-English learners. So it gives you an idea of the composition of our schools. Let's see, Alan, how do I, do I just scroll down here? Yes, I do. Oops. Okay. So, um, English proficiency in California is measured by the California English Language Development Test called the CELT, which was first implemented in 2001. Um, in 2006 and '07, they, the state developed and the testing, uh, provider developed a common scale, they did scale scores by ranges, and then they associated those with grades. And then 2009-10, there was a new kindergarten and first grade overall score and proficiency definition. So, um, the CELT, um, serves as both the initial assessment to determine if a child is an English learner or is, um, what we call initially fluent, um, that's called an IFEP, um, in TK through 12. The items are all aligned to our former English Language Development Standards. We have new standards as of a couple of years ago. Um, the test has not been updated, and I'll get to that a little bit later. And there are four domains, each of which are equally weighted, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And there are five performance levels, which makes it, um, and this terminology is pretty easy to understand by the layperson and by our families. Unfortunately, I'll share with you a little later, it's going to get much more complicated. So, um, English, um, if, if you're proficient, um, on the CELT, and that means you get an overall early advanced or advanced, and, um, all of your domains, the reading, writing, speaking, um, are immediate or above, you can be, um, reclassified, and then there's an academic piece that goes with that. So the initial assessment for, um, for the CELT is administered to all students who move into the district, um, who indicate on their home language survey that any, that there's a language other than English spoken at home or by the student, or in the past. And it has to be administered within 30 days of the student's enrollment. There are, um, complicated issues around that, but the State Department has been very clear that if there's a language other than English listed on the home language survey, we have to administer the CELT. And there are no, and once a child takes a CELT, there's no way to get out of taking the CELT every year until you are proficient. So, um, English learners take that CELT every year to determine their progress and their proficiency, and if they've grown. So, um, we receive the results in lots of different ways, the initial assessment by school and grade, annual assessments by school and grade, and then all assessments by school and by grade.
And the CELT is very, um, time-consuming. Done individually?
For kindergarten and first grade, yes, that's an individual, each, it's administered one by one. Um, as you get older, you can do it to a group of students, but again, there's also the speaking piece that has to be done individually, so.
So our staff spends a lot of time doing this?
They do, and it's, uh, a lot of work the first 30 days of school, because we have to have tested or retested all of our students by October 31st. And so our English Language Development Specialists are running around like crazy people, trying to get all of those assessments completed, plus all of the new students that they have to test within 30 days. So this slide record, just represents how many CELTs we've given every year, and they, it's all in the 800s, so that's a lot of testing for our staff.
Any reason, uh, for the slide fall off in 2012 that you could point out?
Well, it's 834, 864, I mean, it's 30 kids, so, um, it's just kind of how our enrollment goes, and some years we have a few more English learners than others, but as you can see, it's.
It's a very wide scale.
834 to 870, it's not a huge range.
True. Thanks.
So, um, so, the CELT is currently being revised, and that's a good thing as far as it's going to bring it into alignment with the California Common Core standards, the English Language Development Standards, as well as the related English Language Arts standards. Its new name is the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, LPAC. It's a new acronym for you?
Just what we needed.
Just what we needed, yes. And the transition year is scheduled for the next school year, 15-16, and I'm still not quite sure what that means, but I'm sure it will be revealed to us in time. Um, unlike the CELT, um, the LPAC is projected to have several components, a diagnostic screening, a primary assessment, classroom-based interim and/or formative assessments, and then summative assessments, and all aligned to the new, and actually two-years-old, English Language Development Standards. Now it's going to get complicated, so I will try to get through the really complicated part, and then you can process it, and we'll come back for the rest of the report. Um, I want you to think of a three-dimensional chart, because we are going to move from that very clear five levels, beginning to advanced, and then the four domains, listening, speaking, right? We're going to move from that to a three-dimensional, very complicated model. So I'm going to try to make it as clear as possible, but it's very complicated. And I, I'm only bringing it to you so that you and the public have some idea of what we're transitioning to, and what our English Language Development Specialists and our teachers will be grappling, and our administrators, what we're, we'll be grappling with.
Marsha, can I ask?
You can, sure.
Before we get into this very confusing model here, um, is it true, I'm, I'm hoping that this is true, that the tests are designed in such a way that, um, we'll report the results on the test and, and some software or agency will come back and tell us where each student stands in this model? Or do we need to figure this out as we go along?
That's an excellent question, and it has not been revealed to us yet, just quite how this is going to work.
Okay.
Which means that it might take up even more staff time.
Well, it certainly looks like it.
Wow.
More tests if nothing else.
It's complicated.
Because I've watched folks do the CELT, and I realize.
Well, right now, the CELT, what happens is when our ELD specialists administer it, they also score it, because it's called a preliminary score, and then I have to, I ship it up every month to the test, testing, um, vendor, and then we get the reports back months later on what the actual or the verified, so we have to, the teachers go forward with a preliminary scoring, which is fairly accurate, um, but it's still not the official score. So, anyway, proficiency level descriptions, these descriptors, um, I want you to think of the overarching dimension as the proficiency level continuum. So they've developed a continuum for us, and it's, it's a multi-layered continuum. So the proficiency level descriptors are supposed to provide an overview of the stages of English language development that English learners are expected to progress through as they gain proficiency in English, and so that, that makes sense. They describe student knowledge, skills, and abilities across, across a continuum. And in addition, there are three modes of communication reflected, and I'll get into those, but they're collaborative, interpretive, and production, and there are two dimensions of knowledge of language, metalinguistic and awareness, and accuracy of production. That's your brief overview. I'm going to get into just a little bit of depth, but I just wanted to give everyone an idea of the complexity of this new system of ours, this projected one. So proficiency level descriptors, these are organized to represent English language development as a continuum, am I just too far on Alan's computer? Of increasing proficiency in language learning and use, starting with the native language skills and competencies that students come with when they enter school, and concluding, but as their, their documents say, not ending with lifelong learning. So the three levels represent the stages of English language development and describe expectations for how well students under. expectations for how well students understand and use English. So, emerging students in this, in this proficiency level usually progress very quickly in learning kind of basic English for immediate needs, as well as beginning to understand and use academic vocabulary and other features of academic language. Expanding, and I want you to think about explaining this to some of our families. These are the students who are challenged to increase their English skills in more context, they learn a greater vocab, a variety of vocabulary and linguistic structures, and then they're applying their growing language skills. And then finally, we have bridging. So, those students continue to learn and apply a range of high-level English language skills in a wide variety of contexts. And then they, when they exit out of bridging, they're considered to be proficient, and then they go into the lifelong language learning, which you could say all of us are, I hope, always learning. I learn new vocabulary, it's like LPAC all the time, so, sorry. So, in addition, each of the levels includes the following sections. Should my printer have worked? Okay, so, I've gone ahead, but there's an overall proficiency score, so that'll be a general descriptor of the student's ability at, there are several stages, entry to, progress through, and exit from, those three levels. Then there's the early-stage descriptors of the abilities of the English language at the early stages, and then the exit stages are descriptions of the abilities of the English language learner at the exit from the level. So then, we have the proficiency level descriptors, also emphasize that English learners at all proficiency levels are capable of high-level thinking and can engage in complex cognitive demanding social acad and academic activities that require lang, you know, language, as long as they're provided with appropriate linguistic support. So, the extent of the support needed varies depending on the familiarity and the complexity of the task and the topic, as well as the student's language proficiency. So, in this model, we have three general levels of support identified, those are substantial, moderate, and light, and I think those are fairly self-explanatory. And then once, and in addition, you see occasional on the slide, which applies to the proficient students who are now those lifelong language learners. The next dimension in our three-dimensional chart is, involves the mode of communication. So, the descriptors for our early and exit stages of each proficiency level are detailed across these three modes of communication, and then the two dimensions of knowledge of language. So, collaboration means engagement and dialogue with others. Interpretive means comprehension and analysis of written and spoken texts. And productive means the creation of oral presentations and written texts. Oh, finally, no, you thought I'd never get there. The third dimension of our three-dimensional chart includes the two dimensions of knowledge of language. Metalinguistic awareness is the extent of language awareness and self-monitoring that students have at the, at their level, they can, the ability, for example, to self-correct. And then the accuracy of production, the extent of accuracy in the production that they can be expected to exhibit at each level. And accuracy may vary within the level, depending on the context, such as the extent of the cognitive demand or the familiarity with the task. So, as you can see, we are entering into a very complex process to determine the level of our English fluency across several dimensions, and the needed instructional support for each student. So, I do have, we've gone from like a one-page to these, you know, legal-sized, three pages to describe this. If the board's interested, I can share it with you, but it, it really gets complex. And I think we can include that as the Part One, something to look forward to. We'll move on to funding and our program improvement status next time, next year.
Oh, this is one of those unanswerable questions, or maybe it's just an observation, but I've known native English speakers who, on this scale, would not be considered proficient in some of these areas. Is there any way we can allow for that?
I don't know enough about what this new assessment is going to look like. They have had a process where they've had teachers and, you know, experts involved in giving feedback in the development of it, but I haven't seen even a prototype yet. So, what I've told, what I've presented tonight is kind of the bones of what we know.
One thing, first of all, thank you very much for presenting the very complex information. So, one thing the board can think about, which has generally been the case, and I don't know if it will continue to be so, is that there is some local control with regard to a policy of deciding who is going to transition, you know, in, into certain, I mean, it, it's not only the test, but there can be other, other factors which may, which may make it more, maybe useful for families and, and for teachers and so forth. So, why don't we wait and see what the assessment looks like? And then, I have the feeling that our staff will probably take a look at that and try to figure out what will be most useful for them in, in guiding the kids and for the parents.
So, you're correct as far as the redesignation, when we designate a student as, re-designated fluent English proficient, that was the local control, I think you, you mean...
That I'm referring to, correct.
Remember, lower, we determined, we had to use the CSTs at that time, so we determined what level of CST would be considered for a child to be designated, re-designated as fluent English proficient, re-designated.
Clearly, there's going to have to be some professional development or training. Is there any funding for that?
I haven't seen any.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can't imagine that they can issue a new test and just dump it on us, but we'll see.
Unfortunately, I take...
I can imagine that. I fear it. They do give us a very modest amount of money, they reimburse us for the administration of the CELT, but it does not, by any stretch of the imagination, cover the actual costs.
Right, and you also have to consider that theoretically, the local control funding for is giving specific monies for English learners.
Correct.
So...
Yes.
Not much to us.
And I'll delve into the funding piece next time.
And I think that, you know, Pat's point is well-taken, that, you know, when we see the test and see what we really need to do, and what we, we'll probably have to ask our staffs to do, then we can discuss it further.
Right, I mean, it, I really feel like it's very important to consider the particular population in your district, and our particular population is so interesting, particularly because we often have a group of very young emergent, you know, very, very new to English students who remain here for a relatively short time. So, it, the, the way in which you might structure services in order to best meet people's needs might be different than in a, in different district, so I hope that we, at least with the small pot of money we have, you know, will be considering that, and I'm sure you will.
And I will just say that the current CELT test, at least for the transitional kindergarteners and kindergartners, is less than ideal.
So, maybe this...
So, we're hoping for an improvement, even though the language and the, the ratings and stuff got, have gotten very complicated, allegedly.
And our staff that works with EL students are quite amazing, so, and they work overtime, all the time, so...
Yes, and I, I feel very privileged to work with them, and I meet with them on a monthly basis, and we, one of them's in the audience, and we're struggling together through this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Two things that I hadn't quite understood when I read them, and now I sort of understand them, maybe. That moves us to Resolution twenty-fourteen fifteen oh six.
What page is that?
It's on page two forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. The governing board of each school district is responsible for filing board member's signatures with the county office of education, and this is per Education Code four-two-six-three-three. This resolution supersedes all previous resolutions representing signatures of the governing board. And so, ed code authorizes signatures from governing board members. And so, we have a resolution that will be coming around, that, we need to get your signatures, basically, and so we're asking that the board approve Resolution two oh one four dash one five oh six, signature card for the board members.
Any questions?
So, we need to sign this? Okay, I actually forgot to ask you, so, oh, actually, I guess this is probably true for Ron, too. So, it's, you know, that's, it's not my full legal name, Pat, and usually, I would sign it Patricia, so, but I, it doesn't matter to me.
Actually, I wonder, on the left, the line on the left says signature, and the line on the right, I don't know what the line on the right is for, are we supposed to print our name?
I believe you have to print your name, so if you...
So, why don't you, maybe she could print her full legal name above where it says Pat Lowe?
Yes, you can sign it and then print your full legal name, yes.
That makes sense. So, we do, I guess we need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move, we approve this resolution.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Board Member Blank.
Aye.
Aye.
Pat, you didn't vote.
Oh.
Aye.
Everybody's used to me making the motions. Okay, that moves us to the last review and action item, which is to approve certification of the November fourth, two thousand fourteen election results.
Yes, thank you. And so, the Alameda County Register's Office has provided the certificate of election results and a copy of the official canvas statement of vote for Measure LL for the Albany Unified School District election held on November fourth, two thousand fourteen. And staff is recommending that the board approve certification of the November fourth, two thousand fourteen election results. And I apologize in advance on the details of the agenda item, it says, City of Albany voted for candidates running for school board, I believe it was probably a cut-and-paste error, but this is actually for the approval of the Measure LL results.
Any comments, questions?
Oh, they're beautiful numbers.
We're all very grateful to the public for having passed it with overwhelming odds, overwhelming vote.
Yes, I, I felt that gratitude when I looked at the, at the number of yes votes and how much those voters were willing to support the schools. Thank you for saying that, Board Member.
And eighty, eighty-four percent is quite a validation of the quality of the work that our staff does.
That's right.
And our teachers do, and our custodians do, and our secretaries do. I have two signatures. So, we need a motion to approve certification.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Now, I'll sign, and then we'll move to board and superintendent comments.
Thank you, and I actually have four comments tonight, but I'll try and keep them brief. First of all, I'd like to let the board of trustees know that I'm looking forward to attending the California School Boards Association Conference this weekend, starts on Sunday and runs through Tuesday, and so I'm looking forward to attending sessions with you. This is the first time that I will be attending as superintendent, which is a very different lens than whenever I attended CSB conferences before, so I'm very excited about being able to go to that. The second thing is that the, at the, a previous board meeting, Peter Parenti presented to the board about the Local Control Accountability Plan Advisory Committee, that we are calling the LCFF slash LCAP Advisory Committee. And what I want the board to know is that the committee is comprised of parents, students, staff, and community members, and it's very important that our stakeholders have input into this process. I want you to know that this announcement has been made, it is already on our district website, it is already on our Facebook page, it will be distributed on e-trees and school newsletters, the announcement is currently available in Spanish, Korean, and Chinese, and I will be also putting it in my December superintendent's letter to the community. So, this is going out in several venues, and we are inviting interested stakeholders to contact the district office if they're interested in serving on this committee. In a previous board meeting, I'd, and, and on my updates, I had talked about the systems thinking that Peter Sengay had, had done, and I took a, a team of administrators and directors. On January ninth, we have another kind of introductory training that is going to be held at Merritt College, and it's going to be open to about two hundred people. I have taken the liberties of signing up twenty-six slots for Albany. We're, we're all in, where this is important training, it's good work that the county superintendents have agreed to do, and part of this team, of the AUSD team, is I would like to have two board members serve and come to this training. I, when I put it out to all of you, I received an overwhelming response of people who would like to attend, to be in keeping with the Brown Act, you can have two board members. I'm asking trustees to discuss amongst yourselves and, and let me know sometime in the next week or two, two board members who'll be interested in going to this. There will be additional trainings that are going to be held in Pleasanton in February, and that is for a little bit more intensive training for instructional leaders. So, this is work that we're going to continue doing, so maybe we can work on it with our board president, vice president, to find two people who would like to be on this.
I would have been very interested, but I'll be out of the country at that time, so...
Okay.
Certainly very interested.
You're interested? Let's see, who's interested in the first place? Sure. Are you interested? We can, we can wait, we're going to get response.
I'm, I, it's early in the, it's, it's in January.
January ninth.
January ninth, it's all day.
I, I, I would let the board members have an opportunity, I have, as he works.
Some of us have read a lot of Peter Sengay's work.
So, Ross and I could consult, I think, just two of us offline and respond.
Great. And Paul, you're interested as well?
I'm definitely interested.
Thank you.
And finally, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays. This is our last board meeting before the break. I wish you all and the community, and our staff, and our students, a very restful winter break. I also encourage our community to attend as many of our winter holiday concerts that are happening this week and next week. Our student performances are amazing, it's a great way to showcase the, just the great talent that we have. So, happy holidays to everyone, thank you.
Pat?
Same to you, superintendent. I wonder if Board Member Black and I are going to want to talk about the same thing?
Probably.
Probably, okay, so, it is on the items, agenda items for the future. We have been talking for some time about making our appointments, our C appointments to the Arts Committee and to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And I have found a candidate who I am willing to describe for the, for the Arts Committee, and Board Member Black informed me that the city is waiting for us to have a person fill out that information. So, I would be, I don't know how you want to approach that at this point, because I know we want to make that appointment soon. I also, I, I just want to say briefly, I've, I've said this before, I see these appointments, I see these appointments in, in several ways. I think that we want someone who will serve, serve the city and the schools well. I think that there are also opportunities for us to find potential leaders in the community to encourage potential leaders, and I am very, very dedicated to finding diversity, and I've said that many, many times, and so the particular candidate that I found is a very well-qualified woman, so I'm, I'm very happy with that. And I also have a suggestion for the Parks and Recreation Committee, I could not find a specific person, but I would actually suggest that it might make sense to ask the two parcel tax committee heads. Yeah, I don't believe that at this time they could commit, but if they would, could suggest someone from the group who worked with them, because that is often, Traumatola, our consultant, really, I thought, made a very good point when they said that usually that parcel tax committee and that group is where you find your next generation of leaders. And, so anyway, so, so first of all, the Arts Committee thing, so I don't know how you want to proceed, you want me to tell you about the person, or what are we going to do?
Do we need a formal action for that, or could we decide it now?
I think it's not on the agenda, so we can't actually vote on it, but we can, you can describe the person, or we can bring it to the agenda committee and make sure we agendize it.
Yeah, we'd want to do that as soon as possible.
Yeah.
We actually have on our January...
That's what I noticed.
Organ, it's, it's already agendized, it will, it will be agendized, which is the committee assignments, and so...
You mean to make the appointment, or to... You mean to make the appointment, or to?
I believe you start with discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll move to review and action.
Okay, I mean, I think that's fine, but I would just say that I think we need to have a protocol for this in the future, because there's been a long delay. In addition, because there was no clear protocol, and you kept saying you wanted someone, I already talked to this person. So you put me in kind of an awkward position. So I would say in the future, you know, this is slow, there's delay, you know, we want, we want to have a clear, a clear way we're going to do this.
And I think we have only one meeting in January, is that right? We do have two in January?
Thirteenth and the 27th.
Okay, good, so.
So if you have a candidate, you know, I think we should actually talk about making that an action item, you know, then.
Yeah, you could just email us the information. We couldn't discuss it before the next meeting, but we could look at it.
Okay, I would appreciate that, because I feel like I've been put in an awkward position, because there hasn't been any clarity about this. Otherwise, I would have tried to follow the protocol, so yeah, I would definitely.
And that's a point well-taken, I think that we should find a way to make a formal protocol for that.
So the, so the issue is, you know, bringing, creating that protocol, and also at the next board meeting, we'll be discussing not only those kind of appointments, but the committees and the schools that we all represent, since we've just changed over.
Right. Paul? Thanks for that, Pat, and I did have one other thing. For those of us who are going to be attending CSBA, in the past, we've gotten together usually on the first day of the meeting, early on, to decide who is going to attend which sessions, because what we have thought in the past, and it still makes sense to me, is that we don't want everybody attending the same session, because we can come back after CSBA and report to the board what we learned, and if everybody attended the same session, that kind of limits the discussion.
That's a good point.
Usually, you know, at any given time, there's two or three talks that I'd be interested in, and that's true for most people, so I'm sure we could coordinate it. So just a suggestion that we, offline, we can come together, we can come up with a time that we can meet and make that decision before we actually start attending sessions.
Let's see, so, actually, let me go back to my point and then make a point about that. So to avoid any Brown Act violations, I'm just going to send the information to the superintendent and to the president, and you can decide how you're going to interact that. So how are we going to do this? Because I remember last time, we did it on the airplane, like, we all looked at it and circled.
Yeah, well, we have to register, so if we all decide to get there at a certain time to register, we can just have a quick discussion.
On Monday morning, or Sunday?
Sunday, it would be Sunday.
Sunday, that's fine, okay.
The meeting is Sunday, Monday, Tuesday?
It's Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, and I believe it's the, for the keynote speaker with the beginning sessions, like at 8:30, there's a, there's a registration period, it starts, but it runs, the registration runs all day, but I looked at the agenda today, and I think the first session starts like at nine o'clock. So if we want, we can agree to meet at a particular time, if you want to meet at 8:30.
Right.
At the Mos, well, of course, Moscone Center is very big.
But there's the line.
And there's a, there's a.
There'll be a registration line, though.
There's a registration line. We all have cell phones, we can text and say, "I'm here," and we can meet, and then we can kind of go through, because we'll get the program, and usually if there's adjustments and times, they'll have those little sheets.
We already have the program, or should.
Yeah, it's better to do it ahead of time, I've found, so I would suggest looking at it online and making your choices ahead of time.
So I would say that folks should prioritize what they think they want to see beforehand, look through the agenda, send it out so that we have an idea, so that we don't have to sit around all and miss meetings when.
I think that makes, should we send it to Val?
If you send it to me, we can, like, I'll create a grid, and then who knows where everyone's going to go, then I can just bring that to you and say, "These are all the places where you're going," or.
Could I just ask, are the student board members, of course, they may be very busy with other commitments, but have they been invited to?
They have been, and they've been registered.
We are both attending.
Okay, it's usually, it's usually interesting, and there's usually one, like, lunch or event for student board members from, from different places, right? So there's usually some interesting opportunities.
And I believe there's, the student board members, there's still a two-day period, I believe, I'm trying to remember, because I went through the whole program this morning. But yes, there are strand, there's a strand for the student board members.
I remember that.
What I want to make very, very sure, both of you are attending, yes?
I believe we're both planning to attend on Monday.
Okay, are you going to take Rapid, Bart in?
Probably.
Okay, and then you'll be taking Bart home, yes?
Most likely, yes.
And one of us will escort you to the Bart station to make sure that our students are on Bart safely, and there's someone on the other end picking you up at the end, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
So do you have their cellphone numbers?
I'll make sure that we get it, and so we meet, I'll just make sure that we connect, and that, I'm hoping that one of you, the trustees or myself, we will make sure we get you to a Bart station, all right?
Usually the talks are interesting, I'm glad you'll be able to make the time to do it.
I think you'll find it really interesting, plus there's a lot of goodies down in the basement.
Yeah, you can get as many pens as you want.
Pens, any other board comments?
I'm just going to mention that I will simultaneously be attending the CSB conference and the Fall Meeting of the American Geophysical Union, which happens to be at Moscone Center from Monday through Friday. So I'll be walking back and forth across the street from Moscone North to Moscone South.
That sounds like good multitasking.
So, so we'll work that into the sessions, too.
So I'll briefly mention that I attended with ex-board Member Marissa, the Wellness Committee, and this has become a very large committee.
Oh, that's great.
We realized that there were three main things we needed to look at, gaps in what we do for wellness, the gardens, the production gardens, and then actually coming up with an actual wellness policy, sort of taking together all the things that are in board policies and administrative, and the things that would be meaningful for the public and for teachers and staff, and coalescing that into some kind of a document. So we broke out into actually three different groups, and I'm working on the policy with our chef, Clal, and the gardens already have, they've applied for a grant.
That's great.
Right there at the meeting. Pat and I also attended the San Gabriel and Superintendent Williams, the San Gabriel.
Design team?
Whatever we call it.
The design team.
The design team. That's fascinating, it's fascinating, you know, because there are so many different pieces to put together in designing a new school, especially a school that we're not sure what we're going to actually be doing with. So, you know, that's difficult. I also attended the Community Advisory Committee, where our funding groups come together, and that also has been a very, very great group. Those are a lot of folks who have a lot of information and a lot of contacts in our community, and we talked about the Common Core and all the groups that need to come together, so I think I've seen online some calls already from schools and from different community groups. And the Crafts Fair was great, it was great, they did such a great job. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, I know we need to go, but just on the San Gabriel Design Committee, I would just, I think the superintendent is aware of this already, and the staff and the board can kind of think about this. I mean, I think it is very exciting always to think about the possibilities, but I think one of the issues that really came up is where will we get the money? And how much money will we get? And so I think the thing that is a little, that we need to be very careful of, is to really be careful to have a common message and to have a careful framing of the information that we share with the public, that if we're doing this, that it's very preliminary, that at this point, you know, we're still waiting to hear about funding and so forth. So I thought that was one really good thing that came up. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to, we want to be careful about the messages that we give.
Thank you. I always have to think about money. With that, we're adjourned.
You got to hit the gavel.
I have to hit the gavel.
Thank you, President Rosamond.